According to a Minneapolis City Council VP, Black Lives Matter extremists surrounded her vehicle and held her hostage, demanding that she get rioting charges on them dropped, or they would not let her go. She says, much like the black businesses and residents in George Floyd Square, she too was held hostage. A couple of weeks ago, these extremists got into a clash with police, and the police have failed in Minnesota to clear the no-go zone that is referred to as George Floyd Square. There have been very horrifying stories about gunshots, gun battles, people being killed, a medic being shot and killed, a video of news reporters ducking and hitting the ground as gunshots ring out. Things ain't going so well in Minneapolis. We are now at the point, well, actually, I should say we've been at this point, where the extremists are willing to take hostages, to a certain degree, to get what they want. We saw this happen at Evergreen College about four years ago, where the administrators were held in their offices and not allowed to leave or go to the bathroom. They had to submit to a struggle session. But now these people are out of college and they're in the real world. Now they are actually taking people, they're unlawfully restraining people, we'll put it that way, we'll try and be as less, less hyperbolic, because they want what they call justice. And that justice is, they do not get penalized for the crimes they commit. Something interesting happened, which has invoked some very serious, serious philosophical conundrums for us and this country. Derek Chauvin was convicted in the death of George Floyd, and he was sentenced to 22 and a half years. Of course, many on the right are saying that he's a political prisoner. We saw people rioting during the trial. The jurors were escorted in with armed, men armed with actual machine guns. And one of the jurors actually said that they were scared, that their, their home would be destroyed, they would be threatened. And perhaps that's exactly why Chauvin was convicted. Now, is Chauvin innocent? Well, look, we all saw the video, and there's an argument to be made, but many people thought, at the very least, he was not guilty. Courts don't determine whether or not you're innocent, just guilty of a crime. Now, we saw something else recently. Bill Cosby was just released after serving just about two years in prison for assaulting like 60 women or some really large number. And it's not because he was not guilty or innocent, it's because of a prosecutorial error. They weren't supposed to prosecute him, or I should say misconduct. And now many people are shocked, watching a man they believe to be guilty going free. But they say Derek Chauvin, now that's justice. Now, the conundrum we see here with this hostage situation, whatever you want to call it, is that we have two large factions, two umbrella factions in this culture war. Perhaps you can call it libertarian versus authoritarian, or whatever, left versus right. On one side, I'll say this. It is better that 10 guilty persons escape than one innocent person suffer. That means, when I saw the riots unfolding in Minnesota, when I saw the judge say outright that there was no venue by which Chauvin would have a fair trial, I said, then release him immediately. Charges dropped. If you cannot have a fair trial, we do not take away someone's rights or freedoms. But they did the opposite. And what you see from this is that people don't understand why Bill Cosby got to go free. They said, it was, it was a technicality, oh. Yeah, that's right. Because we're the good guys. And we can recognize Bill Cosby's a bad person, but we still recognize why the system must protect the innocent. Derek Chauvin should not be in prison. Sorry, you can claim he did all these things wrong, but when they were rioting, terrifying people, holding this people of the city hostage, taking over this intersection and the blocks surrounding it, and now surrounding this city VP, saying, give us what we want, or else. They are telling you, in no uncertain terms, it is better that all of these innocent people suffer, so that one guilty person does not escape. I reject that. That is the mentality of evil, and historically, the bad guys. If you want to suppress and oppress and victimize innocent people, making them suffer, so that you can guarantee one guilty man go to prison, nah, you're the bad guy. And that's why what I say is, as soon as the riots broke out and the judge said they couldn't guarantee a fair trial, Chauvin must be released. The guilty, assuming he was, should go, because we do not play with the innocent. And we do not allow extremists to make them suffer. But of course, these extremists say, nobody's innocent, right? Let's read this story, and I'll tell you where we're at, and we'll dive more into this philosophical conundrum. Before we get started, head over to timcast.com, become a member, and you will get access to the exclusive members-only area, which is about to have more than just segments from the TimCast IRL podcast. For all of you who are members, you're incredible. You're helping us hire new journalists, a newsroom, production crew. And we just brought on the team to start producing the new Mysteries podcast. We have a name for it, we're gonna be building it out. And soon you will find exclusive podcast episodes. So when you're a member, we're doubling the value. I'm gonna keep producing. I don't, your, your membership is not going to just make my house big or anything stupid like that, I don't care about that. We're gonna hire journalists. We're gonna make more culture and content. We're gonna inspire people, we're gonna change the world. And that's what you are buying at timcast.com. Already, we have a ton of articles being written by our news team, which is growing. We're bringing on new editors, and we're about to launch a new show. I'm so excited for this new show. Talking about the unexplained cults, paranormal, true crime murders, mysteries. It's just about the things we can't answer. And it'll be creepy, good fun, lot of conspiracies in there. But this is what we're building, and it's all thanks to you as members. If you're not a member, please become a member now. Don't forget to like this video, subscribe to this channel, and share the video if you really like it. We've got so much awesome stuff on the way. I can't believe what I'm dealing with over here in this, in this building. We got so many new people coming in. It's truly a dream come true, and it's only, it's possible thanks to all of you who are members and all of you who watch this content. Now, let's get serious. Fox News. Minneapolis protesters hold city council VP hostage by blocking vehicle and demanding riot charges be dropped. You see what they're saying? They committed crimes, they harassed people, they made the innocent suffer, and they don't want to be held accountable for it. We cannot be a society that allows the innocent to suffer and the guilty to escape at the same time. Fox News reports. The vice president of the Minneapolis City Council says she was held hostage while attending a pride celebration over the weekend, as video shows a large group of protesters blocked her vehicle until she agreed to sign a list of their demands that included dropping criminal charges against rioters. Andrea Jenkins, who represents Minneapolis's 8th Ward and identifies as the first black openly transgender woman to be elected to office in the US, said in a statement Tuesday that it is also time to stop the holding of black-owned businesses, the neighbors and residents of the neighborhood near George Floyd Square hostage more than a year after Floyd's death on May 25th, 2020. The incident happened Sunday afternoon, while Jenkins was attending the Taking Back Pride event in Loring Park, as video shows her sitting in the front passenger seat of a white vehicle being blocked by a group of extreme Black Lives Matter demonstrators, or extremists, many with their cellphones out recording. It might be three days before I get out of here, Jenkins has heard telling someone over the phone while sitting in a vehicle, according to a 23-minute-long video shared to Facebook by activist Donald Hooker Jr. Hooker shows the camera, camera, a list of the people's demands that Jenkins must agree to before she's free to leave. The handwritten note calls for the formation of a community police accountability commission to reopen all the cases of murderers, murderers, to drop the charges for all 646 protesters and other protesters for 2020, and to make all information on the murder of Winston Smith available. It also demands the resignation of Mayor Jacob Frey, and to leave George Floyd Square alone, period. This is a no-go zone. An area where the police have trouble entering, or just outright can't, where lawless groups just exert power to take control, and it is happening in more than just this one place. The culture war is, is, has gone from content and comics to movies to a cold civil war. People, people having their bank accounts shut down, losing their jobs in their homes. And it is dangerously close to being hot. That means kinetic warfare. Perhaps you can call it a hot civil war already, because they're surrounding people in cars and threatening them. And we know what these people are capable of. They've killed before. Are there roving bands of right-wingers going around doing the same thing? No, there aren't. This is exclusively of the left. Now, you do have right-wing extremists, but they're lone wolves, or small fringe lunatic groups that don't agree with other fringe groups. This is the far-left. This is a national organization. These people have adherents in federal government. So yes, they tear down statues, then scream and cry when their statues are vandalized. They want power, and they will make the innocent suffer to get it. The protesters shouted each demand and asked if they had Jenkins' support. She agreed yes to the first few, before shaking her head when protesters called for Frey's resignation. The crowd shouted again, until Jenkins finally agreed, and she asked, "Do you understand English? I already said it." Responding to the final demand to stay out of George Floyd Square, Jenkins retorted, "So you're asking me not to do my job?" As the group shouted over her, she continued, "I was elected to represent that neighborhood. So what you're asking me to do is not do my job. Know what they're telling you is, your constituents be damned. You will do as you're told, or else. It doesn't matter to them what the people of the city want. What matters to them is their power, and they get what they want." They would set fire to buildings and riot and taint a trial to see what they view as the guilty being punished. They would make the innocent suffer. Otto von Bismarck, this is, apparently, he famously said, "It is better that 10 innocent men suffer than one guilty man escape." But how do you sustain a system when the innocent are fearful that no matter what they do, they could be locked away, or punished, or killed? Beaten. Eventually, these people break down and say, enough, I can't handle it. For the system to survive, we must preserve the right to be innocent until proven guilty. More importantly, that the innocent do not suffer, so that one guilty person not escape. Bill Cosby, he gets, he gets let go. Why? Because we want to make sure that all of the rules are being followed. While we may believe that Bill Cosby did something wrong, imagine a system that said, eh, we think he's wrong anyway. Rules be damned, lock him up. What happens to the innocent? We can't do it. A woman in the driver's seat leaned over to say, this is not a negotiation. "We are not asking no more, white lady, we are demanding," a female voice in the crowd shouted to the driver, as seen in a shorter snippet of the incident shared by Andy Ngo. "Do your job and drive." Jenkins eventually signed the list of demands, and protesters shouted for her to print her name and date it, as if a signature under duress is legally binding, you morons. "Black pain, black trauma, black anger is real and justified. What is not justified is the inhumane treatment of other humans because they hold elective office," Jenkins said in a statement posted to her Facebook page Tuesday. "On Sunday afternoon, while attending a pride event in Loring Park, something I've done on the last weekend in June for the last 20-plus years, I was verbally attacked, berated, and held hostage against my will by a large group of angry protesters." Jenkins said she is a public servant representing some 31,000 people who live in the 8th Ward in South Minneapolis, which she describes as a beautiful community that has, that was forever changed by the inhumane murder of George Floyd. Let me just stop you right there. You see what happens when you entertain this? You give an inch, they take 20 miles. While you may come out and say, look, I understand your pain is justified, they say, that's all I needed to hear. Yeah, but you're not justified to shut your mouth, we're doing what we want. That's what you get. Quote, "I can't tell people how to express their anger, their fears, or their pain, but I do know that when your pain impacts others, and that becomes problematic," Jenkins said. "I have always believed in open dialogue where people can talk and be respectful of their differences." While she continues to be willing to sit down with activists, advocates, and protesters to understand their policy change demands and recommendations, Jenkins described how she refused, however, to be bullied and held hostage to somehow accomplish that. "Every citizen of this city has a right to bring forward their concerns, but no citizen has the right to detain and coerce anyone to do anything. That includes elected officials," she, she added. As for calling for the mayor's resignation, Jenkins said it will be Minneapolis voters who will determine if Frey stays in office come November, not her or any other council member. I believe that if you still live in this city, after watching everything that happened, I'm sorry, there, there's only so much I can say to warn you. Now, it may be, the fire gets put out. The analogy I use is your home is burning. The kitchen starts on fire, and you say, ah, I'm gonna wait. Okay, maybe the fire department shows up in time, puts the fire out. They walk inside, and they say, are you nuts? There was a fire. Well, you're lucky the fire is out now, you'll be safe. But are you really gonna gamble? If you're in your house and the fire alarm goes off, you leave the house. I've worked for companies, I was working, when I was working for Fusion, the fire alarm in the building in New York goes off, and I get up, grab my stuff, and I'm like, let's go, let's go, let's go. Nobody else goes. They're like, eh. I'm like, that's amazing. That's the mentality these people have. They could sit inside Minneapolis as residents and say, it's too hard to move. I know the kitchen's on fire, but maybe it won't reach me. Okay, you're right, maybe it won't. If it does, don't say, we didn't tell you so. From CBS Minnesota, protesters face off with police for control of Minneapolis intersection. From just about two weeks ago. This is, it's, it's ongoing. And I'll tell you this right now. We can see where we are headed. Let's go back in time. Campus Reform, June 1st, 2017, just about four years ago. Evergreen protesters hold admins hostage over demands. At this time, the kids were in school. The kids, I mean, these are adults. And they were holding administrators hostage, not letting them go to the bathroom or leave their offices. Now they're out of school, and we see where this goes. But let's, let's, let's review some context. Video from inside Evergreen State College continues to leak, showing that protesters had at one point held administrators hostage until they agreed to comply with their demands. Sound familiar? The incident took place during the second day of demonstrations, demanding the resignation of Professor Brett Weinstein, Weinstein, who angered many students when he challenged the school's decision to ask white people to leave campus for a day of diversity programming in an all-staff email. Having already accosted Weinstein with such vitriol that campus police suggested he leave campus because officers could not guarantee his safety, the students set their sights on the administration, confining school officials in an office until they capitulated to an ultimatum, demanding various diversity-related initiatives. I'll tell you what I'd do. If I was in my office, and they were, if you didn't let me leave, I'd go out the window, if I had to break it, I'd break it, or I'd bash the door down with a chair. And I would say, you use physical force against me, and I will respond in self-defense. What do we see, however? When this person in Minnesota is surrounded, she just signs the document. Well, not like the document's legally binding, and perhaps that's better than running anybody over. But now, do you understand why so many states are passing these anti-riot laws where they say, you are allowed to flee from these people in your car, and you will not be held responsible if these people get hit? Because what do you do? Like we saw in Provo, Utah, when someone runs up to your car and shoots you? You're gonna get in trouble because they attacked you? I'm sorry. If I have a powerful weapon of some sort, and someone runs up to me without a powerful weapon of some sort and attacks me, I have a right to defend myself. In this instance, these people may not be in vehicles, but you can still take someone's life punching through the window, or otherwise. People have a right to defend themselves and escape when they feel they're in danger. What about this? This isn't the first, it, this story from Minneapolis, it won't be the last, and I'll tell you what comes next. Vendors recall getting attacked by Washington Square Park mob. You see this story from this past weekend? "A wild mob attacked at least three food vendors, ripping down one victim's American flag hanging on his cart, and hurling a soda can at another," two of the victims told The Post. "The mayhem erupted Sunday night as the rowdy revelers, fresh off the pride parade, demanded Abdo Mansour replace his American flag with a pride flag. They said, take that effing flag down. Why don't you put up my flag? And they broke my American flag. I called the cops, they didn't want to come. The cops stayed right there." And AOC comes out and says, it's hysteria. These people are psychotic. Now, this story's messed up, right? He said, how many minutes the cops were waiting to see what happened? It was like 15 minutes. A lot of people came, they broke stuff, they stole money. They stole money? Pride? What does that have to do with, with pride and standing up for your rights? Yeah, I didn't think so. No, they stole this poor man's money, because he had an American flag on his cart. It's not all bad news. All right, there's, there's, there's a lot I want to show you, the capitulation. But these news stories should be good news to you. Now, perhaps a bit pessimistic, just because we're constantly talking about these negative things. But talking about them is actually a good thing that should make you feel better. Yeah, people say to me, they're like, dude, I watch your videos sometimes, and I'm just like, ah, ah, ah. Can I watch something about like foofy puppies and marshmallows? And I'm like, I don't think you should feel bad seeing this stuff. I think you should feel resolve. The fact that these stories are coming out, the fact that even a black trans woman is speaking up, saying enough, leave this intersection, shows the extremists are burning their candle at both ends. Or as they say, a candle that burns twice as bright burns half as long. That means these people are going nuts. And as they push and push and push, they may get some victories, like this one. They may. But in the long run, I think more and more people are waking up to what's going on, and they're getting angry by it. The teachers in Loudoun County, I'm sorry, the, the, well, okay, the teachers in Loudoun County who have crossed the line, who are doxing people. The parents in Loudoun County who are stepping up and saying no. The parents at all of these school board meetings, hundreds across the country, saying enough. The more we hear about this, the more it means we will win. That's what Steve Bannon was saying. He said, once these parents find out what they're teaching their kids on August 15th, you are gonna see ripples. It's a good point. Michael Malice brings up, look how dumb these people are. How could anyone be pessimistic? It's hilarious. And he's right. He's absolutely right, they're both right. We can be upset when we see these things happen, but we need to remember that watching them happens, talking about them happening, means we're actually winning. How did it get this bad? Well, people were scared of the woke mob, but more and more people are standing up and saying, nah, I ain't playing. More and more people. To me, that's inspiring. You need only look at regular old mom and dad. There's that viral video of the black man, he's a doctor. And he's like, why are you telling my kids they can't succeed? He's like, I'm in charge of like this, this hospital, or I forget what job he has. But he's like, I'm a supervisor to a ton of people. Like, I'm in control, I'm the boss. And you have the nerve to tell my kids that they can, they're oppressed? That's right. Who wants to hear their kid come to them and be like, I'm a loser, and I'll never account to anything, I'll, I'll never amount to anything? Man, I always tell little kids, and they're like, I just can't do it. I'm like, bro, you can do it, you gotta believe in yourself. You gotta apply yourself. Look at this story. UNC Chapel Hill votes to grant 1619 project founder Nikole Hannah-Jones tenure as ugly brawl erupts outside closed-door trustee meeting a week after she refused to teach at the school and claimed powerful donor blocked her from lifetime role. They caved to the violence. That's right. But I wonder about this. This is bad news for those that believe in freedom and believe in protecting the innocent. But I, but I wonder about this. Imagine you don't want to be involved, so you don't speak up. I'm sure many of you are scared. I don't blame you, it's scary. You speak up, you get fired? All right. Here's what I've been trying to warn everybody about. Keeping your head down will not save you. You will be at work one day, and you will say, I don't want to be involved, you know? And they'll say, silence is violence, unless you join us. And then you make a choice. Because either you're in with them, and you adopt the authoritarianism or support it, or you say no. Okay. Some people will just say, please, please, I'm a coward, and I'll do anything you say to just leave me alone, so I can go back home. Some people do that. That's right. And then what happens? They come for you anyway. It is unsafe to be a part of a collective that would excise its own for more power. And we saw this. All of these woke critical race theorists who had, who had been ragging on Asians for years. Why? Well, because they said Asian is white-adjacent, or was considered white now. So they were fair game. But then, someone decided that we must stop Asian hate. And these comments from the past resurfaced. And the woke immediately turned in on their own and said, how dare you have said these things? You never know what the rules are gonna change to. Your best bet is to stand defiant and say, leave me alone, I don't care, and I won't be involved, sorry, that's on you. And what's your worst-case scenario? You may lose your job, you may be facing dire straits, but you've done the right thing to help make the future better for everybody, especially your children, your family. It might, it's not gonna be easy. It wasn't easy for the founding fathers. Yes, I understand initially the founding fathers used pseudonyms. But eventually, they said, I'm mad as hell, and I'm not gonna take it anymore. And what you need to understand about the founding fathers is that they were fighting an uphill battle. And this is the serious warning. They were fighting a very serious uphill battle, because most people didn't know, didn't care. And they were advocating for independence. They used pseudonyms to publish documents. People could read them. And they didn't know exactly who wrote them, because it was a fake name. Eventually, these pseudonyms weren't needed anymore. Why? Many people started to agree with these founding fathers' documents. And they said, I agree with independence. I am here for these meetings. I will stand tall and favor and vote for independence. And once they had enough support, they said, here be my real name. And they all signed that document, the Declaration of Independence. And for that, they suffered. Today, what you need to understand is, we're not fighting that uphill battle necessarily. Sure, the woke control cultural institutions, so they do have high ground in some areas, but most people reject what they do. Most people can't stand that they're violent, and they're using violence to get their way. And the more we see it, the more angry they get. But if you do nothing, then, the only thing needed for this evil to succeed is just that, that good people do nothing. Most people, when you look at the polls, are not woke. If they all stood up right now, if every Trump supporter, every conservative, every, every anti-woke liberal type said in their companies, I'm not doing this, this is racist, and I refuse to be involved, and put out an email or told their coworkers, if they all did it at the same time, we win. It's over. And then we move on to other political arguments. But people are scared. It's true. There, there are powerful assets on the side of these extremists, notably that they're willing to use violence against those that they oppose. And the police are unwilling to come to the defense of, of many of these people. So maybe you need to take, you need to recognize, what happens if you do nothing? We are fortunate enough to have networks like this. I'm fortunate enough to have supporters like you who helped me out with making timcast.com possible. From that, our communication allows us to resist the culture revolution. Imagine if those who were not organized had this ability to communicate during Mao, during, you know, Chinese Communist Revolution, the Great Leap Forward, et cetera. You see, the communists were organized, powerful. And regular people lacked the ability to communicate. Once the communists took over cultural institutions and mass media, regular people who opposed it could not organize, so they kept their head down. You see photos of thousands of communists, and you say, that must be the power. I better submit to it. Today, we can see something different. Although these cultural extremists, these Black Lives Matter rioters are getting violent, attacking people, videos like this, channels like this, allow us to communicate, and allow us to have some organizational response. We can say no right now to all of it. And then what will they do? They're a fringe minority. The more we stand up, the more we speak out, the better. But I gotta say, I do love, I do love that it's a fairly one-sided battle. Take a look at this story from WTOP. "House Democrats Demand McCarthy Take Immediate Action To Address Green's Behavior." I understand why it's not so easy. Nearly 40 House Democrats are demanding Kevin McCarthy take what they call immediate action to address the behavior of Marjorie Taylor Greene of Georgia, whose actions, they say, in a Thursday letter obtained by CNN, could lead to violence against members of Congress. They already did take action against Marjorie Taylor Greene. Did the Democrats take action against Ilhan Omar? Of course they didn't. The Republican Party is spineless, pathetic, and weak. And that's why, you know, Trump is coming out and saying, he's basically going to war. I'll just put it that way. With the establishment Republicans. Because they really screwed him over. Trump is the most popular politician. He's not really a politician, but he is, he ran for office, he became president, so he is. And I believe he is the most popular in the country. He may also be the most hated in the country, but I will add. With his stepping out of the limelight, most of the anger is displaced. His support's still there. Now a lot of people are also supporting Ron DeSantis, two very popular politicians, particularly on the right. But you see what happens with the Republican Party? While we're saying, we are the, are the majority. And many of us are silent and they've been silent for years and I'm wondering when they're going to not be silent. If that's true. We need to actually become just the general majority and tell people we don't stand for this. Otherwise, I love this the most. The left says Republicans have 18% of the population, but 50, 50 votes in, in the senate or whatever. And they complain about minority representation. Let me just tell you something. Sure. But it's probably true, the Republicans represent more people than you do. Because you have a stranglehold in blue areas where AOC will, will, you, what did Nancy Pelosi say? You put a glass of water with a D on it and it'll win the election. That's exactly what they believe in because it's true. So when the Republicans come out and they say something like, we want to help the working class. That's probably speaking to more Americans than anyone else. When the woke leftists come out and say, vote for us or we'll smash out your teeth, we'll shatter your windows. Yeah, people will do it, but they probably secretly hate it. So here's what I see from all this. It makes me angry. It makes me worried. But in the end, I'm a bit optimistic. How can you have a story where a black trans woman was threatened with violence and held hostage? And, and the left would defend that? There you go, my friends, you can share that one. You want to complain about Black Lives Matter? Ask why they're harassing black trans women. Cause they are. Now of course, the cult will defend the cult. But it's time we just stood up and said, no more. Now think about this. The administrators at Evergreen. They were like, okay, we're going to give them what they want. Do you think behind the scenes now they will use their efforts to protect Black Lives Matter? I doubt it. Many of these people who are suppressed, oppressed, physically attacked, they may publicly say, I'm so sorry. Oh, we're, we're so sorry. And then they take, and then two seconds later, they're running full speed to the police, saying, we will donate to you, we will support you, please help us. If I speak out, they'll attack me, I'll give you whatever you want. That's where we may be going. It could be good news. But the violence is escalating. And the night is always darkest before the dawn and we don't know when it will be the darkest. I fear that not enough people will stand up in time. And that's just the way it is. But ultimately, I'll put it this way. Hearing from Michael Malice, hearing from Steve Bannon, I'm very optimistic. I think we're going to win this one. I think we're, we're going through a period of turmoil. We're going to go through our period of crisis and we'll, we will be better off for it. In fact, the crisis may harden us and make us stronger. And then I think about timcast.com. I am 100% confident in the success of this website. I've gone through the, the new alpha version of the site. Everyone's super excited, it looks amazing. We're adding new shows and it's going to be incredible. Your membership at that website, it's going to get you more than just content from me. I'm literally using that money to hire more people, to make more content, to build more culture. We're going to keep going, we're not going to stop. We're going to have dozens of shows. It's going to rival the likes of Netflix with its own news division, news documentary, talk shows, politics, culture, comedies, et cetera. We're, we're going to build everything that we can. We're going to invest every, every penny that we can. To building up something amazing. Someone asked me, Tim, how do you prevent that site from becoming like CNN? And honestly, I don't have a good answer. I'm sure, you know, people start these companies with the best of intentions and then you get corrupted or, or you get threatened. I'll tell you this. So long as I'm alive, I'm in charge. And we're running this show and we're going to do our best to make it work. I'm very inspired by Andrew Breitbart with what he did with Breitbart. He had tech, he had news, he had, you know, politics, all that stuff. And he did die young, but he created something that's lasted well beyond him and it's continued to do in many respects, good work. I say i- in many respects because look, we're all guilty of clickbait and some of these problems. I am, of course, Breitbart is, the New York Times is worse. I, I'm just trying to say that none of us are perfect. But hopefully we can build something that's a net positive for everybody. So I'll leave it there.